Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and thank you for coming to this town board meeting, the only one we'll be having this month in the month of December, and we are pleased to be here. I'll be giving the supervisor's report, we have a special presentation, and we'll try to get everybody home safely on these nasty roads. So the first will be a statement of the supervisor. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The opening balance was $3,289,930. Receipts were $1,385,107. We dispersed $1,587,208, and there is a remaining balance of $3,087,829. The above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on October 31st. I'm not sure that date is right. Does that sound right? It doesn't sound right, does it? Yeah, I guess it is right.
October, yes.
Yep, it is October. We have the books to close toward the end of this month, and we'll have both November at that point. You can see that we had a report on the community preservation fund, and it's current, it doesn't go all the way back. I told Ann that it isn't necessary to go back as far as the very, very beginning, but it's growing nicely and we're grateful for that. I have no budget adjustments, so having said that, the above is a true and a correct accounting, shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on October 31st. Is there a motion to accept?
Show move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Councilman Ross is traveling tonight and will not be with us as best I know. There is a clerk's report tonight?
There is. November 1st through November 30th, 2014, total local shares remitted to supervisor, $858.83. Amount remitted to Ag and Markets for the Spade and Neuter Program, $64. Amount remitted to environmental conservation, $1,609.17. We had no marriage licenses in the month of November, so nothing was sent to the state for that. And this is a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,532. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue, and Ken Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just have two very quick little announcements. One is on December 17th, the 2015 recycle permits will be available. Now, this is for each household, one permit is $15, two is $18. You can come into the Town Hall, the recycle center will also have them, and we can always do it by mail, just by sending a self-addressed stamped envelope to me. And the second thing, I just would like to remind all residents of Red Hook, and actually it's all New York State, that all dogs must be licensed. And I know we have a lot of unlicensed dogs in Red Hook, so come on in and license your dog, please. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any quick announcements tonight?
No.
No, no. Maybe they will see in time. Tivoli's having their Christmas event next Saturday in the parking lot of the village, Saturday afternoon, and there's a craft fair in the firehouse all from noon till the event in the parking lot begins.
Great. Brenda?
Just one quick one, and I forgot my notes, but so on January 12th here at Town Hall, there'll be a meeting of a new group that's being formed. Originally, they called themselves a youth committee, but now the name is going to be, I believe, Northern Dutchess Community Coalition. And the initial impetus for the group to form was a concern over substance abuse, especially among our youth, but as they've been having some first meetings, they decided that really they want to approach and address the overall community's health and well-being, including seniors, young adults, old adults, youth, everybody. So if you're interested, please come out on January 12th at 7:30, and the press releases will be going out, there'll be letters sent out to stakeholders who are trying to involve all sectors of the community, and if you're interested, please come out.
And where is that being held, and what time?
Town Hall, 7:30. I may have to correct myself on that later. January 12th.
I think it might be 7.
And it's called Northern Dutchess?
Community Coalition. They have a nice core group that's been meeting for several months.
Good.
Yeah, I have it 7 to 9, actually.
Okay, let's correct that. January 12th, 7 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. And I have just a note that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the Time Warner billings we have been notified are increasing, so those of you at home will be looking to check on your equipment and service fees. You'll see that you'll be receiving an increase in the billing statement, so I don't want you to be taken by surprise, but it is an increase. And the good news to the board is that the mortgage tax revenue for the second half of the year has been received, and we had budgeted $160,000, and it came in at almost $170,000. So that was very, very nice.
Pleasant surprise.
It's a very, very nice way to end the fiscal year, so we're happy about that and grateful. Okay, I'm going to wait. I don't think there's any public comment, or is there? Is there any? And so I'd like to move right in before spending any amount of time on comments to a presentation by Tim Weedeman, who has been the consultant for the Town of Red Hook with Rondock Consulting, Town of Red Hook, the Village of Red Hook, and the Village of Tivoli for our shared services, exploration of highway services. So, Tim, welcome and thank you for coming out on this lovely night.
Yeah, thanks for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity to give a brief presentation, the presentational cycle through here and pop up. I have a daunting task of presenting nine months' worth of work in 15 minutes or less, so this is going to feel rushed, and I'm going to use some consultancy jargon stuff that may feel a little contrived, but I think that's the quick way to try to convey the message that I want to convey today, which is that we're about three-quarters of the way through the study. We want to start to get on the radar for each of the three municipal boards so that you know what the study is coming up with, so that you have a chance to grapple with it yourself, think about the issues and challenges that we've identified, and most importantly, think about the options for shared services that we're starting to identify, and that over the next two months, as we complete the study, we will finish assessing the potential for those options to have savings for the municipalities involved and to improve the quality of highway services in the municipalities. So I'll walk through that in a little bit more detail over the next 15 minutes, but the first thing to do is to maybe just reorient you all to the timeline for the study process that we've been going through. And so the timeline is up here on the slide. We started back in March of 2014. The timeline takes us through February of 2015, and in that time, we were working to complete five major tasks. At the beginning, we held a kickoff meeting with the steering committee for the project, which involves representatives here from this board, Harry and Sue, as well as the Town Highway Superintendent Theresa, and then representatives from each of the other two municipalities as well. We held a public kickoff meeting as well. Is that going to make everybody fall asleep?
That's better.
I'm worried.
That's better, Bill, thank you. That's much better, Bill.
Yeah, that probably helps you see. So we did the kickoff meeting, and then we started a pretty long process of just documenting existing conditions, and so we were quiet for a while as Peter Fairweather and I, the two consultants that are working on this project with the town and the two villages, were gathering information from each of the municipalities, understanding how highway services are provided in this community. You know, every community does things a little differently, and so it was important for us to take the time to understand how things are done here. We got through that with the creation of an existing conditions report back in the fall, earlier this fall, and that's been released, and I'll talk briefly about that. At the same time, we started working on the next task, which was to identify options for shared services and then to start to study those options, to look at two main things. What's the feasibility of the options that have been identified? And then importantly, how do those options affect the two study goals of saving money and improving the quality of service? And then that task is what we're really working on primarily now in December. And we've had to delay a couple of things, just about a month, just so we have time to make sure that we get all the work completed. We have a public meeting that'll be coming up in January that was originally going to be in December. Back as we started the project, we thought December was a good timeframe. December's not really good for a lot of things when it comes to public meetings, so I think this is probably a better timing for that meeting as well. Get past the holidays, and then we can have a public meeting to review the work that we've done so far. Out of that public meeting, we will finalize our feasibility study. We'll get input from residents on the topics, some of which we'll talk about tonight, and then others in addition to that that we'll talk about at the public meeting. And then our work concludes with action planning, so working with the three municipalities to say, okay, what are the options that we want to move forward with? And then how do we provide kind of a roadmap for implementing those options? And you know, for kind of you all that are steeped in this stuff, that may look like some draft intermunicipal agreements that the board can deliberate about and review with legal counsel and say, look, this feels like this is the right step, and we're comfortable with the terms of this agreement, and this is something that we can adopt and move forward in some formal way with some shared services. There'll probably be some other steps in the action plans, including maybe looking at some future grant opportunities. All of the stuff that we're going to talk about today is kind of extra work. You know, shared services may sound great, and they may have good long-term benefits, but they don't come without some initial work to get things started and to change the way that things are done. And so in the action planning, we'll hope to identify some funding sources to help pay for any additional legal review from attorneys or any additional planning work that needs to happen in order to implement some of these options. And then this project, I should have mentioned at the beginning, is funded through a shared services grant from the county, from Dutchess County Planning, and so we'll work with the town to complete the closeout documents that are required for that grant at the very end of the process. At the beginning, in our first public meeting, I think we took pains to explain that this is not a rigged process. We, as consultants, are coming into this process without any conclusions. We felt really confident from the beginning that the steering committee that's been working on the project has also come into this with an open idea about what's possible. And so there's no preconceived answer. We're really trying to look at what works well here in Red Hook, knowing that what works in some other community is not necessarily the same thing that'll work here in Red Hook. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the things we've learned in the course of the work that we've done that suggest some unique solutions in Red Hook. And as well, it's important, and this is part of why I'm here tonight, that each municipality understands that the actions that happen, if any, as a result of this work, are determined by each municipal board. We can't do it, the committee can't do it. It's really the municipal boards that need to take action in order to implement any of the findings of this work. All right, so that's the timeline. Quickly, a reminder, this may look familiar from some of our past meetings, but I think it's worth reviewing quickly. The goals and objectives of the study, really three goals. The first one, and these are kind of all reflected in the grant application, and they've been constant conversation with the committee, so they're really at the core of this work. The first goal is to reduce costs, so we need to figure out ways, and especially under the governor's tax-free program, need to figure out ways to reduce the cost of local government services. And so that's a driving force here, and as we get to the action planning part of this, we'll be looking at, are there options here that can help the town and the two villages reach that 1% reduction in the levy for the tax-free program to be able to receive those additional tax credits from the state? And so that's an important part of what we're looking at here. That's maybe something to keep in mind as you think about the options that we're coming up with and the actions that the Town Board might take as a result of this to fit within that 1% levy reduction is part of the goals for this study. And then, you know, that would be potentially easy, and maybe not pretty, but it would be easy if all we had to do was reduce costs. But there's an important service that's being provided here. Highways are not something that you can just kind of ignore for long. They tend to deteriorate pretty quickly, if that's the case, and get icy and all the stuff that we're ready for this year. And so we need to improve those services as well. We need to constantly be looking at how can those services be improved. So those seem contradictory, and that's why we're here, because this is not necessarily easy stuff to figure out. It's in addition to the stuff that the good staff that are working day-to-day on the operations need to be thinking about in order to provide their services. And then finally, it's important to us, and you know, Peter and I have been involved for about nine months, will be involved for a couple more months. We're neighbors just across the river, so we have kind of that vested interest. But in the grand scheme of things, we come and we go, and we want this to be work that continues a conversation in the community about how do we improve services while reducing costs? That's kind of the imperative that all local governments are facing these days. And so, you know, even though it seems contradictory, how can we frame that conversation in a productive way to search for new creative solutions, especially within the realm of highway services? So that's what we're here to try to do. I'll quickly run through some of the work we've accomplished so far. We had a report that came back in the middle of the study process, back in the early fall, late summer, early fall, that was our existing conditions analysis. This looked at the services that are provided by each of the three municipalities. And this was pretty eye-opening. I think, you know, we've done a lot of work in other municipalities, so we kind of can anticipate some of the things that we'll see when we do a study like this. But there was really a lot of learning curve for us in Red Hook in the way that services are delivered in the town and then in the two villages. You know, I think one of the key things that is probably not news to you, but is an important underpinning of this conversation about highway services, is that the town has one structure for providing highway services that looks one way, a Town Highway Superintendent that's elected and a Town Highway Department that kind of exists to primarily, almost exclusively, provide those highway maintenance and operation services. Whereas the two villages, Tivoli a little more than Red Hook, operate under a different model, a DPW-style structure, where there's a department that does streets maintenance, but it does a lot of other public works maintenance. And that may sound like, ah, you know, that's not a big deal. But when it comes to identifying ways to coordinate and cooperate between departments, that kind of structural difference can make a really big impact. And so we've uncovered a lot of that and talked about a lot of that in this initial existing conditions report. And if you want to kind of dive into this, it's a lengthy document, but if you want a pretty fine, detailed understanding of the services that are provided in each of the three municipalities, it's worth at least a quick glance. So this was our starting point for further analysis. This made sure that we had it right in terms of the services that are provided now. It's available on the project website. I have a URL that'll go up on the screen at the very end, but that website is also linked from the town's website, so if anybody's interested in downloading this report, you could do that off of the town's website as well. Second report that we provided drew from the public meetings that we held during the summer. We had some conversations in those public meetings. We also met with department staff in each of the municipalities and then talked within our steering committee about what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that the three municipalities and their highway services departments face. This is important too, because really we want to get a sense of what are the challenges? What are things that each municipality feels that it does really well? What are the kind of sacred cows that we should not mess around with because they work really well and we don't want to break them? What are the things that have never really worked as well as people wanted them to and may be an area for us to explore some new opportunities? So that's also available up on the project website, and it really is the context in which now we've launched into identifying options for shared services that really work in Red Hook, we hope. So the third report, also a report available on the website, is what I'm here to talk a little bit more about tonight, and that is the study Options and Alternatives for Shared Services that we've identified. And so this really describes the options that through Peter and I, our work, through the committee's brainstorming and through the input that we've received from public meetings and in the department meetings that we've held, have started to bubble to the surface as potentially promising options. And I'll walk you through those tonight in a condensed manner. Again, there's a lengthy report that provides a lot of detail on these options. I'm going to try to jam it into about a five-minute summary here tonight, just so that it's on your radar and you understand what options we're looking at. So a quick summary, there's about four options that Peter and I, in our kind of world, would characterize as true shared services options. These preserve the existing structures in the three municipalities for providing highway and streets maintenance services, but say, how can the three municipalities work together in a more formal way in order to improve the services that are provided and/or reduce costs? And so these will get unpacked, the language here, this is where the consultantees kind of creeps in. But the first of those options, those shared services options, is to standardize some common, not policies, policies and procedures. And then the second option for shared services has to do with sharing administrative services across the three municipalities. Third is shared training. Fourth is shared capital planning and purchasing. So those are four promising shared services opportunities that we've identified, and I'll unpack in a moment. There's two other options that are more restructuring options. These are kind of a little more drastic. They have some impact on the structure of services that are provided in the three municipalities. The first of these, we're calling realigning service delivery areas, which sounds, again, really consultant-like. What this means is looking at ways for each of the three municipalities to provide the service of highway maintenance, including snow removal, in a way that's not bound by geography and political boundaries, but by the best routes and best kind of configuration of those services without regard to those boundaries. And so we'll talk a little bit more about this, but that's starting to stretch, you know, departments outside of their traditional service areas. The sixth option is maybe the one that draws the most concern, and we heard this in some of our initial public meetings. It's one that, you know, we've kept in the mix in order to look at the pros and cons. It's the consolidation option, this kind of scary option that looks at how might we merge departments and operations across the three municipalities? And so I'll get to that in a minute. We understand that there's some concerns there, and I think there's some ways to respond to those. There's a set of additional options that we've started to explore, and we have a little bit of detail in the report so far, and we'll talk a little bit more about in our work, but really take us beyond highway. And so they're outside of the scope of this project, but worth mentioning in particular because they're key services provided in the broader DPW structure that exists in the two villages. So water and sewer, garbage collection, parks maintenance, are other traditional DPW services that are not provided by the highway department in the town, but are provided by the DPW and the highway departments in the village. So non-highway options there. Our focus for the remaining portion of the study will be on those first six options. The shared services ones, one through four, and the restructuring options, five and six. We recognize that restructuring is a scary concept, you know, so we've heard that. We're not saying, let's rush into this option, but we think it's really important to include it in the study. It was mentioned in the original grant applications. It is an option that a lot, not a lot, in some communities it makes sense. But we understand that there are challenges, and there's pros and cons to that option that really need to be explored here, and we feel that the study is the right way to do that. That said, I don't anticipate, I think Peter and I don't anticipate, and from conversations with the committee, I don't think the committee anticipates that there's going to be some green light for a consolidation option in the near future. This is something that we understand is complicated and would take time if it does make sense at some later point. So that's the options that we're going to talk about in brief tonight and that we're looking at in much more detail over the next two months as the study wraps to a close. I'll mention that, you know, I think all of this is within a context that you all know and are familiar with of lots of existing shared services that have worked really well in the Town of Red Hook, both with the two villages and also with other towns. And so, you know, maybe you know them better than I do, but the Town Highway Garage is an example of success that we can really point to as starting some of the conversations that have led to this study. There's other examples that are kind of outside of the highway realm. I know maybe I'm at risk here mentioning the Building Inspector Service that's provided for the Village of Tivoli, but, you know, I really think it's worth pointing to because as much as there may be challenges with it from time to time, those challenges are normal in a shared services arrangement, and it's how you deal with the challenges, not whether or not there are challenges. And so I think that's really important, and it shows that the communities here are willing to tackle those challenges even when they're maybe not the fun part of shared services. And there's existing agreements too that the town has with, for instance, the Town of Myland for a shared chipper. So there's context and there's precedence for a lot of the stuff that we're talking about here that show it really can work. And so as much as consolidation and realigning, these restructuring options may seem ambitious, I think if some of this earlier stuff works and if the community warms to those ideas and they feel like they're right in the future, they may be worth exploring, which is why it's worthy of inclusion in our study work here. So that's enough on that for now, but I just wanted to explain the options that are on the table. This is where this gets painful, and so in order to not kind of make your eyes blaze over, especially with the small font up here, I'm going to move pretty quickly through this, and I can send this PowerPoint to Sue, and we'll put this up on the website as well. This ends up, I think, being a relatively concise summary of the 25-page report that you could read. So instead, if you have a little bit of time and can glance through this, this is a good way for you to get a handle on the options that we've identified and are looking at with much greater detail over the next two months. So a quick summary, the first option again is to standardize some operating policies and procedures. This is about as dull as it gets in shared services world, but it's really fundamentally important. I think as we went through the data collection process, identifying what are the existing services that are provided, we found a lot of challenges in the use of distinct language about highway services across the three municipalities. And again, that may sound trivial, but it's not. It's something that if there's different language being used and different structures being used, it's really hard to have a productive conversation about how we cooperate more and how we collaborate more. And so we think one of the first steps that can help to lay the groundwork for more successful coordination, collaboration, and maybe someday consolidation is to start looking at standardizing some of the common operating policies and procedures across the three municipalities highway operations. So this is driven by a couple of important needs that have come out of our conversation. One is that there's risk right now. If an employee leaves one of the departments, usually they take a lot of institutional knowledge with them. A lot of the employees have been here for a long time. They do work that's pretty specialized. They have a lot of kind of knowledge from their work over years and years and years on the tasks that they do, and the loss of that due to retirement, due to somebody deciding they're going to move out of the area can be pretty damaging to a small department. And so standardizing operating policies and procedures can take some of that institutional knowledge and document it in a way that can be transitioned to somebody else that might come on. In addition, there's really a challenge, and I think maybe acutely felt within the villages, but I'm sure this exists within the town as well. When it comes to accurate, timely, and useful reporting to kind of monitor and maintain and measure the performance of highway services within the municipalities, it's tricky. There's a lot of work that gets done in the highway department, and you know, Theresa has a really good grasp of how all the pieces fit together. I'm sure you all do as well, but I think everybody can benefit from better reporting. And so that's one of the things that this standardization can help with, improving that coordination and reporting between the highway operation and the oversight of the municipal board. So we've got a bunch of steps that we're recommending how this would work, really diving into the weeds here about what are the operating procedures that we might look at? What are some training policies that might reinforce that? And in particular, through the work that Theresa's been doing over the last year or so, starting to evaluate some software packages that helps to kind of frame out what's the common language that makes up these operating policies and procedures? And some of the things, just so you're aware, and Sue, this may be at your desk as well, that this has to do with accounting codes. I mean, it's not necessarily, you know, really exciting stuff, but it's the nuts and bolts that make a service operate. How do we standardize that stuff across the three municipalities so that a common conversation is possible? How does it help? Well, in the end, if we can reduce the risks associated with employer retirement and turnover, then we can reduce training costs. We can increase the potential for shared services in the future, and at the same time, we can improve staff skills. If we can document some of the things that are done and then look at those documents and say, well, is there a way that we can do it better that can improve the ability to do these services? On the administrative side, if we can get some better reporting and some more timely and accurate stuff coming out of the budgeting process and the kind of mid-year review, we can do some more administrative reporting that can help the boards to control those costs, help the highway departments themselves to streamline their operations. And this also touches on equipment costs and the future. and the future of shared services opportunities that we can get to if we can have a common language. So, that one is maybe the driest of all of the options, but they're all, you know, kind of nuts and bolts at this point. So, I'm going to move quickly through these next two to keep from having everybody glaze over here. The second option, also administrative-related option. This has to do with record-keeping and data collection. So, really, in the modern day, highway services are typically pretty automated, and there's a lot of data that goes into managing a highway system. Right now, the village has a relatively, or actually, the villages have relatively little in the way of data collection systems for that kind of data. The town has a system that, from conversations with Teresa, is lacking in some important ways. And so there's an initiative afoot to look at some new administrative record-keeping systems. And the opportunity here in shared services sense is to work across the three municipalities on that administrative record-keeping, providing the villages with a way to get some increased capacity to do administrative record-keeping, while at the same time providing the town with the software system that it could use. So, the goal here would be to improve record-keeping and data collection, which allows for better planning, management, and oversight of highway services. Again, in the weeds, how it would work, we kind of documented the steps here. So, the town of Red Hook, in this option, is envisioned as kind of the provider of these administrative services through its highway department. And those services would include data collection, data entry, reporting, and maintenance of this information system for highway services. And it would do that through an intermunicipal agreement with each village. And so there would be some data collected from the villages, entered into a central system, and then reports provided back to the villages, as well as reports internally for the town. And so there's key functions and steps that we've identified in that, and those are spelled out in the report. This importantly, we envision, at least at this early stage, would include the addition of some work for the town highway superintendent and the town highway clerk. And so, we're potentially recommending an increase in the position of town highway clerk. Still working to finalize whether it really is a half-time or some other variant of that. But in addition, it would be administrative software that would be purchased and maintained by the town. So there's a cost associated with this, which as we get to the end of the study process, we'll have a better handle on, okay, an upfront cost, but what kind of savings are we talking about that might be possible with this option that would offset that? And then importantly, are there some grants that could help with an upfront cost like this? So, all of this hopefully would result in more data, the ability for the municipal boards and for the management of these separate highway operations in each of the three municipalities to respond quickly to needs, to plan proactively for the services that they provide and their equipment needs and their purchasing decisions, and potentially help to realign staff internally within each municipality in order to reduce overtime, maybe reduce some reliance on part-time staff to get some savings through that. Third option, a little bit simpler here. We're looking at, especially if there is some move to do some shared administration and to standardize some of those common operating policies and procedures, those first two options that I just outlined. Then there also is an opportunity for some shared training as well. So, the more that the operational policies and procedures look similar across the three municipalities, the easier it is to envision doing a single training effort that covers all three municipalities. And so that's what this option is all about. We're looking for cost-effective ways to continue to increase the skills and knowledge of the departments and their employees, while also, again, reducing the risks associated with employee retirement and turnover. And so, again, like I mentioned, the more that we standardize some policies and procedures across departments, the easier it is to envision shared training as well, and some courses that would meet those standards. And we envision here an annual training cycle that's done jointly, that assesses training needs within each department, identifies some individual training options, but then most importantly, some shared training options, holding that training and then evaluating training. And, you know, both in the formal sense and in an informal training setting, there's specialized skills and abilities within each of the three municipal departments that through a shared training program, we can draw on those specialized skills in order to increase the skills in other municipalities. And so it would be looking at leveraging people from each municipality with specialized skills to maybe help with some of that training. This may involve some funding challenges, so you know, it's maybe something that there'd need to be some purchase of some of this training. And so we'd look into whether there's a one-time cost for that that we need to figure out some ways to fund. Again, this obviously, you know, training is a step in a direction that improves the skills and abilities for all employees. And through that also can reduce rework and streamline the work of the departments, hopefully minimize some training costs, but at the same time, provide important training that, again, highway services are more technical. They're also more highly regulated these days than ever before. And so it's really important to stay abreast of the latest regulations and the latest best practices. And again, you know, if this can reduce turnover, that's another way that it could reduce the costs of highway services for each municipality. Fourth option, this is the last of the shared services options, is to develop a long-range capital planning and purchasing program. And that, you could say that that's something that each municipality should do and does do to some extent. But what we're looking at here is doing it well within each municipality so that then there can be a conversation across municipalities about shared purchase opportunities. Maybe avoiding a purchase in one municipality because another municipality has the piece of equipment, and we can work out some sharing on that piece of equipment. So, the goal here, avoiding unnecessary capital spending, but at the same time, making sure that every department has access to the equipment that it needs when it needs it. Especially with snow removal, you can't wait a couple days in order to get that plow that you need to be able to plow your road. So it's important to coordinate this stuff. Again, this would ideally go with that first option. You're seeing a theme here that some of the earlier options I talked about support some of the later options. And so if there's some standards that get put in place and some standard operating procedures when it comes to equipment planning or capital planning and purchasing, that can help facilitate this. We would recommend that each department complete several steps kind of individually first, and these are mostly familiar. I think in the town, these get done on an annual basis. Updating an asset inventory, developing or updating a long-range capital plan that says, yep, we know this piece of equipment is, you know, kind of, maybe it's getting old quicker than we had thought, and we may need to plan to purchase something new in a shorter timeframe, or no, we've got, you know, a couple of years left on this. And then out of that, coming up with an annual purchasing schedule that could inform the budgeting process. And once that's done, then there's an opportunity to hold some joint meetings and talk about that. And, you know, I think this is one that takes us beyond even just the three municipalities that are involved in this study to maybe involve other villages and towns in Dutchess County or in the surrounding area to say, look, you know, if we can get our ducks in a row and know what our capital purchasing needs are, the broader we can explore options for shared purchasing, the better. You know, with the constraint that obviously if somebody down in the southern part of the county has a paver, that makes it a little hard to get it up here, but there's some opportunities there nonetheless. And so, just a reminder that out of this, we hope that there would be some formal agreements, that if there's a shared piece of equipment that needs to be purchased, an agreement for the purchase of that in a joint way, or if there's a piece of equipment that one municipality has and another municipality wants to use it. Sometimes that's informal, but I think it's important to formalize those things from an insurance standpoint and a safety standpoint. So we'd be looking at formal shared services agreements to facilitate all this. So again, out of this, we hope to get the right equipment available when it's needed and in working order, and at the same time, to eliminate duplication of equipment, avoid emergency expenditures that might come up if there's an unplanned need for equipment, and then increase the frequency with which bulk purchases are made between municipalities. Okay, quickly, two restructuring options. The first one, as I mentioned, is realigning services to kind of provide services in areas different than the geopolitical boundaries of the villages and the town. So, you know, really in Red Hook, I think this is an interesting and important option to keep an eye on because there is a kind of change that's been ushered in by the Centers in Green Spaces Plan in the way that development happens in the town. And so, you know, I think through the TND, for instance, you see a more compact development style that looks more like a village that has village-like needs when it comes to public works, including streets and highways. And so, that changes what highway services look like to some extent in the village and in the town. And so, out of this, we think there are several options that might make sense. But one to kind of sketch out and that we're starting to explore involves three pieces, and they all involve intermunicipal agreements. So, the first piece would be an intermunicipal agreement that would allow the village of Red Hook to provide highway-related services on certain town and/or county roads that are outside of the village. So where it makes sense, if their plows need to go into the town in order to get to a village road somewhere else, maybe that's an area that we should explore, having the village provide snow removal, provide road, street maintenance. So an IMAs would allow for that kind of thing. Second one would be similar for the village of Tivoli. So, looking at are there some particular roads, town or county roads, that it makes sense for the village of Tivoli to be the primary organization responsible for maintenance? And then third, and finally, for the town of Red Hook, to look at whether there are some highway services that it should provide on certain county or state roads within the town and that would be more efficient than having the county or the state provide those services. So, again, the IMAs set up a mechanism through which each municipality can provide services related to highway where it makes sense the most, not just in their geographical boundaries or political boundaries, but based on things like the areas of coverage and the equipment that's needed, the response times that are desired, that kind of thing. So out of that, we hope to make sure that people have the right equipment, be able to develop specialization that addresses the unique needs in each part of the community. So if there's a unique need in one part, maybe there's a municipality that's better suited to that need. And then also to, again, eliminate duplicate equipment, avoid any duplication of personnel that might arise, and just generally increase operating efficiency. Consolidation option, and again, this one is not something that we're thinking is a quick move ahead, but just to outline the option as we're looking at it in the study. The goal here, as you would envision for a consolidation-style option, would be to help eliminate any duplication and redundancy, centralizing the provision of public works, services throughout the town. And that's important. What we're looking at here is really, and this is still in the process, so bear with me here, and if you have feedback, I'm happy to hear it. But we're starting to think that the first step in this is actually a change in the structure of highway services within the town. And so looking at a more DPW-style provision of services in the town. Setting up that structure then makes a mirror to the villages, which makes it easier to think about a consolidation that brings the village's operations into the fold of a similarly structured town DPW. So, that's a little bit new to our thinking here, but I think it's an important step that helps to set up a similar structure in each of the municipalities that allows eventually for consolidation to make more sense. So once a structure like that gets put in place, then the villages would, in this case, transfer their DPW functions, all of their DPW functions, into that town DPW. And that town DPW maybe for a time would maintain separate units to be able to provide services within the villages. So, kind of specialized units that, you know, can do the water and sewer operations that might be needed if there's those to be provided, as well as can provide kind of specialized streets maintenance services that is a little different than, you know, kind of maintaining a town highway, for instance. This would be accomplished by an intermunicipal agreement, again, between the villages and the town. And that would define the exact services that are provided to each village by this kind of consolidated town highway department or DPW, and would define the service levels, what's expected by the villages in order for the town to provide the services to those specified levels, and also the costs associated with those services. And importantly, you know, I think it's worth noting that the same services need to get provided. There really is very, very little, if any, duplication of work going on here. And so, village employees would continue to be needed in order to provide the services in the village areas that they now provide through the villages. And so, a consolidation, we think in any instance, would involve village employees transferring to the town to continue to provide those services in the village areas through the town DPW. So, this is the kind of thing I almost hesitate to put up there because it makes it sound as though we're headed quickly towards something that really, in the grand scheme of things, I think is a large shift that is not something that we're recommending as a step coming out of the study. But we want to put it up there to define what it might look like, and then as we get to the end of the study, evaluate the pros and cons of an option like that. Again, what we think the pros and cons or the pros side of it might involve is improving the financial and human resources that are available to all three municipalities by consolidating a department. You kind of get that whole range of skills and abilities within a single department that can be ushered out to provide services in the best possible way. And at the same time, streamlining operations. If there is duplication, although I guess, again, we don't see a lot of it, maybe some equipment that could get eliminated over time, and maybe occasionally, as, you know, employees retire or move on, maybe there's a position here or there that doesn't need to get refilled. But those are the kinds of things that might happen through a consolidation. So, thank you for your patience going through all that. I realize that was a lot to cram in. Again, we'll make sure that this document is available for you to get the quick version, but then the full version is available in the study website, which I'll put the URL up here in a minute. Now, what we're working on for the rest of the study is to look at the feasibility and the impact of these six options. So we pretty well defined that those are the six options we want to look at. If there's feedback tonight or in the future that there's something you feel we've missed, we're happy to hear that. But we think we've got it pretty set with those six. And so we're looking now at the feasibility of each of the six. And that means, is there support from public and elected officials? Part of why I'm here tonight, to start to make sure that you're familiar with these options. And if you yell at me when I stop talking, then I'll know something maybe doesn't resonate well. But then, as well, we'll kind of gauge that through a presentation at the public meeting in January to make sure that people feel like we've got the right options on the table. The other thing we're looking at is, is it supported by state and local law? It's obviously pretty important that if we're going to recommend an option, that it should be something that there's good precedent for, that there's clear state and local law that supports the implementation of that option. So we're reviewing the legal feasibility. And then finally, does it actually work operationally? It's easy for us as consultants to come in and say, yeah, this sounds really snazzy, and, you know, this could be really neat. But, you know, we're relying on Teresa and Dan and Jim to give us a sense of whether or not this really makes sense on the ground. Is it going to get in the way of getting the work done or is it going to help get the work done? So we've provided a working draft to the committee that starts to look at those feasibility elements, and we're getting input based on that draft.[1572.96] elements, and we're getting input based on that draft. But then the next step is to start looking at the impact of the options. So, what is the impact on those two important study goals, reducing cost and improving the quality of services? And we'll have that in our next report, which will be available for the public meeting in January. So, as I mentioned, the URL, redhook.rhondockconsulting.com. You can go there directly, or there's a link on the town's website that takes you right to that website, and you'll find the documents that I referenced today all up there, and there's also a form that's available to anybody in the audience here via television or here in the room to provide your comments if you want to ask a question or provide a comment on the study. So, I think I went a little over 15 minutes. I apologize, but hopefully that gave you a good update on where we're headed and what we've been up to.
No apologies necessary. Any questions, anybody? One minute, give me comments.
No.
Yeah. There were a lot, but not yet.
The villages will hear this.
Yep, so I presented to the villages of Red Hook yesterday, and I'll present to the villages of Tibbly at their meeting on the 17th of December, I believe.
Have Teresa, Jim, and Dan heard this before?
Yeah, well, they've been involved throughout the study process. Teresa and I met last week, and so we've been meeting occasionally throughout the whole study process, and Teresa is on the study committee, so she meets with us at our monthly committee meetings. Jim and Dan, I've had a couple of interviews with each of them, one at the beginning as we gathered the information, and then one more recently as we've been sharing the results so far.
It's a lot to take in.
It is a lot. It's a lot. As I said, we've been working nine months on this, and it's a lot to try to take in, but we figured it's best to come out tonight, a couple of months before the study is done, to start the conversation, make sure I have a chance to explain what I can, and, you know, I think, as much as some of these feel maybe a little dry, especially, you know, I got to admit, I'm standing up here trying to condense a ton of stuff in, and I feel a little silly doing it sometimes, but, you know, I really feel like there's some exciting options in this pile that I just presented, and even if they don't come across exciting in tonight's conversation, you know, I think as we get closer to the conclusion of the study, we'll hopefully get a chance to show you why we think these are really important and why they put us in a good direction.
I think all of us, though, when we started this exercise, knew that there were areas for all of us to improve. And that was acknowledged by every single one of the entities that are involved, and it's been interesting to see how others do things and listen to other communities outside of this study.
Yep.
And see what's going on, because once you get involved, other people talk with you and so on, so it's all good, all good. It's probably dry to you, but I, too, find it very interesting, and sometimes, out of an innocent conversation, surprises come, you know, and you say, "Oh, why didn't we think of that?"
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, part of the dryness is actually a good sign, because often, in my experience, these studies can get fascinated with something that sounds so great, but really doesn't mesh with the reality of the services that are being provided. And I think, you know, we've come up with a couple of options that really do address things that each of the three municipalities have, you know, have grappled with and have found to be challenges in the provision of highway services, and, you know, hopefully that'll provide some forward momentum for some, you know, some new improvements and some exciting new ideas.
Well, Tim, we're very, very grateful to you and for you coming out tonight.
My pleasure.
In this awful night.
Yeah.
And for sticking with us.
Yeah. Well, thanks for the opportunity to present.
A pleasure. Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Now, the next time you will be meeting, you will be, have you set a date to meet in one of the other communities?
Yes, we haven't set a final date because we're still waiting confirmation on the location, but it'll probably be mid-January, and we're hoping it'll be at the Tibbly Village Hall.
Okay, great, great. Well, that'll be great for us to attend that and see how it's received there, and probably there'll be a little bit more done by then.
Yeah, yeah.
Fewer meetings happening between.
There'll be, yep, and I think, you know, I would encourage you to pay attention and come out to that if you're able possible. That'll be an opportunity for us to start to present the impact of these options, and that's where, you know, Sue, you and I were talking about the, you know, the tax freeze program that the governor has put into place at this point. And, you know, importantly, each municipality, as you know, is going to have to have an efficiency plan that looks at ways in order to reduce the levy by 1%. That's kind of the first step. You have to have the plan, and then you have to implement it and get the 1% reduction. So, all of that is a context for this work. We really hope that out of this, as we do the impact analysis, we'll be able to find, you know, some portion, or if not all, of that 1% savings in some of these options.
I'm sure that'll make the taxpayers of Red Hook happy.
Yeah.
Of the entire town.
Yeah, that would best.
Including the villages. Well, we thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Again. I must say that when we undertook this entire project and talked about this application for study of highway services, which seemed to be a practical matter as we were writing the grant, it was kind of, you know, it was kind of mysterious as to where it would go, and probably one of the biggest tasks for us as we set out was to identify the consulting firm to help us. And so, we took a fair amount of time in interviewing individuals who would fit with the people that they had to work with as far as we could tell. And I honestly think we came up with a pair of wonderful people, you and Peter have been just wonderful, so we thank you.
Hello, Peter, for us.
Well, most certainly.
Okay, we're going to move right along, and, Chris, we had a coordination request in the past from the planning department, or the planning board, to consent that the Reddick Town Planning Board serve as lead agency, and it's coming back because there have been minor changes. Are you familiar with that?
I am.
Okay.
So, the only thing that I would say is that, and we did ask for some clarification on this, one of the things that they've added to the list of governmental approvals is, if you look at the second page, you know, you have the list.
What page number is that?
Two.
Second page. It doesn't say two, okay.
Right, at the top of the page where you see the list of government entities that require approval, one of them is the town board, and that is Red Hook Town Board for lighting district.
Cycle.
Yeah, maintenance and road dedication issues, and then also possible zoning amendments. And so, because of that, I asked them to identify, you know, what they were talking about, because depending on the nature of the zoning amendments they were talking about, it might change your decision about whether you wanted to be lead agency. So, for purposes of this consent, I think that it would make sense for you to recognize that the types of amendments that they were speaking of were minor amendments, that's Michelle's characterization, minor amendments relating to the, I want to call them area characteristics of the sizes of the units and the placement on the lots. Those are the types of changes they were talking about. And with that in mind, then you could consider a consent, and include that as part of your comment back to them, if that makes sense to you. Because it's not, you know, zoning amendments, what zoning amendments, you know? Right.
Right.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
I had a copy of the original, and it appeared to me to be fairly minor, and I'm comfortable with it. Are you, Brenda? Are we okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we have a, I guess all I need to do is just check we consent, right?
A motion, a formal motion.
Someone like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have approved and has the acceptance of the full environmental assessment form and revisions there may be to it.
Consent, what you're doing is consenting to the planning board acting as lead agency.
The planning board, okay, that we would approve of the planning board to be the lead agency on the environmental assessment form.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I have a memo from Kathleen Flood regarding this, and they will sign it and get it back to Kathleen. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have an intermunicipal agreement proposal with the town of Rhinebeck for shared animal control officer services. Thank you, Chris, for working on this.
My pleasure.
And Brenda, I know that you were instrumental in docking this down, and thank you for it.
Does everybody need a copy?
No, fine, Brenda.
Does anybody need a copy that didn't have one printed out? It's in the folder.
You're all set. Yeah, we all have a copy.
So, what did you want, so, did you ask of me?
Well, I thought maybe you'd like to just review a little bit of the behind-the-scenes on this, since you've done a lot of the legwork, the liaison from Rhinebeck.
Well, currently, our dog control officer and Rhinebeck's animal control officer, two names for essentially the same service, have been working cooperatively, very cooperatively, and being each other's backup when need arises, such as vacation or conflicts, et cetera. And in addition, although we have a wonderful local kennel, on occasion, dogs are brought in when that kennel is closed, so during those instances and when we have to deal with a dangerous dog, we've been using Rhinebeck's kennel for boarding, just for a brief time. And so, Rhinebeck had been reviewing their services, and we agreed with them that an intermunicipal agreement would just clarify what each municipality expects and is receiving. And so, Chris put together the intermunicipal agreement to do just that. It addresses dog control backup, provide backup services for one another in the event of accidents or conflict, et cetera, and licensed kennel use. The Red Hook Dog Control Officers authorized to use the Rhinebeck Dog Kennel to house any and all stray dogs, including any dog which may be deemed dangerous. And it goes on to give more details about that, and, for example, our dog control officer, when our dogs are in their kennel, she will be responsible for their care. And this is in draft form. It's been provided to the Rhinebeck liaison, and she said they'll discuss it at their next meeting, so it's for your perusal at this time.
Thank you, Brenda. Thanks for all that work and meeting with the Rhinebeck officials as well. I know it seems like a minor issue, but it's not, because when it's needed, it's really needed. And it's interesting that this conversation has come past my desk from supervisors throughout the county who are wrestling with this same issue of, what do we do when the person we use as dog control officer wants two weeks' vacation? Who's going to back us up? And if something happens that we need additional space, where are we going to go? And so, there's, now that this conversation has kind of floated to the top, there's a lot of back and forth between the supervisors and various people throughout the county trying to figure out what is a good model, and I'm just so happy that we have this format for an intermunicipal agreement. Maybe we can, we can serve as a model for others in how to formalize an agreement. So, are we, are we in position to, is this late on the desk tonight for us to consider until we hear Rhinebeck's response? That's kind of where I think we are.
I think that would make sense, yeah.
Right? Because Rhinebeck has, I know that they, I believe that they canceled a meeting tonight. They were expected to meet tonight. So, I guess I would table this for another night and get a response from them.
Right. Because I need their kennel, and I think we need to make sure you have a meeting in mind.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, I thank you for preparing it, and all of you, read it over carefully. If there's anything that's in it that you see problematic, let us know, and we'll wait then to hear back from Elizabeth Stinsia from the town of Rhinebeck. Okay, so, there is an out-of-district customers agreement, and again, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of same. This is a note from Hank Van Perys, the chairman of the Reddick District One Water District. It has recently come to our attention that we need to legalize any out-of-district use connections to our water system. Our attorney for the town prepared the agreement language and format, and we have received sign-offs from owners of three current out-of-district connections. Town board approval and the signature of the supervisor are required to finalize the agreements. The reason for the agreement is to ensure that out-of-district customer is subject to all regulations and responsibilities of the town water district and to specify conditions for termination of water service by the water district. A brief summary of our out-of-district user situation. Note that we were not aware of the requirement for formal agreements. And this goes back to a permit verified in 2010 when we supplied water to Bard College. So, there was a first agreement with Bard College, then with a resident on Linden Avenue, then the Red Park Pool, and another resident on Linden Avenue, and finally, again, the Recreation Park. So, he says, "Finally, the attorney and I agreed that next year we should do a district extension that includes the current out-of-district customers as well as any properties that are potential customers based on a proximity to existing water mains." That is a good idea.
So, Hank, I think, wasn't prepared to undertake that at the moment, but he understands that it's probably a better.
Understand, but that's a great idea, to include those who are within that area.
But that does require some engineering work.
Yes, I'm sure it does. Okay, so, we have a resolution.
And I think you all got copies of the draft.
We do.
Agreements, which really just, again, as Hank indicated, they set out the, and he and I went over these in detail, they set out the expectations of folks who have provided water service, and of course, people who are inside the district are subject to the district regulations, but someone who's outside the district, you know, needs to get contracts be made subject to those rules, so that's included in the contract. And we have two different, slightly different agreements, one for single family and one for commercial. Because commercials, we need a little more information about the scope and nature of the service for the water so that we can make sure that we're within our capacity.
They never drew up any such agreements when they headed these people at different times?
Not according to Hank's, the best of his ability to, you know, find that out in their notes and research. There is an agreement with Bard, so that one's in place, right?
Okay, Bill, would you like to read that resolution? You have it in front of you? Is that?
Here.
Easy?
Whereas the town board of the town of Reddick is determined that entering into an out-of-district water service agreement between the town of Reddick and certain out-of-district connections in substantially the form on file with the town clerk, the out-of-district water service agreement, is in the best interest of the town, and whereas the proposed action constitutes a type-two action under the SEACER regulations, which have been determined under SEACER not to have a significant impact on the environment, now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Reddick by a favorable vote of not less than the majority of all members of the board as follows. One, the supervisors hereby authorized and directed to execute an out-of-district water service agreement with each of Sally Monford of 218 Linden Avenue, the Recreation Park of Red Hook, Inc., otherwise known as the Pool, and Stephen and Kate Slattery of 163 Linden Avenue, in substantially the forms on file with the town clerk, with such changes as shall be approved by the supervisor and which do not affect the substance thereof. Secondly, the supervisor of the town, the supervisor of the town clerk and the town's other officers, employees, and agents are hereby authorized and directed for, in the name and on behalf of the town, to do all acts and things required or provided by the provisions of the out-of-district water service agreement, and this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I so move?
Second.
Is there, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, that's great to have done. We have provided you, and I don't expect you to, I don't expect to spend a lot of time on this tonight, but just to ask you if you've had a chance to review the employee handbook and whether its content, whether there was anything in it that was troubling to anyone.
Well, enough for me.
Okay.
I went through it page by page, and it's difficult to digest, and I don't have any profound questions about it, let me put it that way. Is it, was the source of this, was this come out of the civil service organization?
Some of it, some of it. Ann reached out and consulted several formats, took what we had on hand, updated it, made some adjustments based on her own experience, and I think what we have to wrestle with, and we need not do it tonight, but a lot of money can be put into the actual development of a fancy book, you know, that becomes a resource to hand out to new employees. And I guess I'm struggling with, do we really need to have anything more than a nicely-bound, you know, document? So, we can talk more about that.
That's more than what we had.
Well, it's, what we had was a pretty decent, hard copy book, but it was so outdated.
Well, it was kind of a pamphlet kind of book, like just.
At the time, you're better off with a binder that you can add policies as they're developing.
Well, that's what I was thinking, a decent binder that we can, you know, we can add as we need to and have a decent table of contents. With tabs that, you know, are easy to find. I don't think employees are looking for any fancy, schmancy, you know, book to take home and put on their shelf, but more something that's useful and easy to get to answer.
It's a useful reference, yes.
Yeah, so, I'll talk with Ann some more, and I need to meet with you about it, too, and we'll go over it and see where we are.
Has Teresa had an opportunity to look at this? She has a major number of people reporting to her.
Have you seen it yet, Teresa? Okay, we'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Yeah, I would think so.
And you could take a peek.
Her input would be important.
One more thing for you to do when you have nothing else to do. You're waiting for the snow to start.
Well, I'm going to be leaving now.
I can believe that you are.
To get ready for round two.
I can believe that you are. Can you, can you tell us if we can expect a decent amount of snow tonight, or are you?
No, I can't. I'm going to be the weatherman.
All right.
We just have to wait and see.
Say hello to the men, tell them thank you for standing and salting while this morning it was, I couldn't get off my back porch. I couldn't get on my back porch. I could get on it if I were willing to fall.
You had access to a scanner. You could see how many people tried to get off their back porch and got off quicker than they.
Oh, I know. There are numbers of broken bones around the community. Yes, I know that.
Really?
It was a lot this morning, so we can avoid that tomorrow.
So, it's always better to stay put if you possibly can. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, Teresa. Okay. In correspondence, there was a document from the Association of Towns, and I pass it on to you. on to you. Do you all have it?
Yeah.
It's the resolutions committee's report that we'll bring forward to the convention in February. I have asked Jim Ross if he is willing to represent me and us at that meeting in New York and of course, all of you, I think we have budgeted for all of you to go if you wish to go. I will not be going this year, but that additional day is the day when towns vote on some of these resolutions, so take a good look at that committee report and weigh in on it and we can certainly send them our reaction if you would like to do that. That would be more than appropriate. We have some time. They'd like to hear from us, I think, sometime in January, so we have time.
I read through there quickly and then I realized many of the motions, it was to not recommend the proposed change.
Yes.
Eleven, yeah.
Yes, yes. Much of it.
Wasn't it exciting reading?
I know, it's dry. It's really dry, I know. The Association of Towns, in my experience, is really big on local authority, you know, local.
Home rule.
Home rule. And I think you can see that throughout a lot of what's all the verbiage in here, a lot of that, so. Okay, so we'll all take a good look at that and come back with any comments to be forwarded to the Association of Towns. They work hard on this. There are representatives from counties throughout New York State that give a lot of time throughout the year to make sure that small and large cities are well represented. Friends of Seniors of Dutchess County Corp., and this is a letter received from that group, from Susan Davidson, who is the executive director, and what they do, what she has done is organized a volunteer-based program that provides the older adult community with free basic support services. And I know that she has received some funding from Dutchess County Agency Grants Program to increase the services elsewhere and I believe that she's offering some of it, are offering to organize up here. Did she not meet with the senior services?
The Friends of?
Friends of Seniors.
Friends of Seniors, yes.
And I just wanted to report that this past year, Friends of Seniors volunteers assisted 330 senior citizens, driving 88,400 miles to 2,564 non-emergency medical appointments and provided 2,521 hours of in-house support, shopping, et cetera. They traveled within Dutchess as well as to Albany, New York City, Columbia, Putnam, Ulster and Westchester Counties and to Sharon, Connecticut. And so the reason I'm reading this is, for more information about the program, which I think is a fabulous way to meet the needs of many of us in the community who may not have family to help us, is you can be, you can get information on www.friendsofseniors.biz or if you are interested in volunteering or need services, the number is 845-485-1277. That's 485-1277.
I think we do have some brochures here also.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. The kinds of services are non-emergency medical transportation, appointments to doctors and that sort of thing, and grocery shopping, visiting, respite care for family, caregivers, telephone reassurance. All these things sound like little things until a person is isolated at home and has no one and then it's a big thing. So I'm very, very grateful to Susan for sending that letter and making, helping to make us aware and the community of that need. The town of Rhinebeck sent a notice of public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a day late. It was yesterday, proposed local law, zoning law there, so I have no point in reading that. And Verizon, this is the Verizon letter that I shared with you as a request for antenna change. We received a letter from Verizon Wireless regarding the existing tenant, antennas, sorry, on the facility on Kelly Road in Red Hook and they are asking that the lease agreement should allow them, they are making this statement, the lease agreement allows them to repair, replace or modify their equipment and I think we have always taken the position in the past that our engineer would need to authorize and verify what it is that they're expecting to do. They're talking about replacing six-panel antenna with comparably sized or smaller panel antennas. And so I've asked Christine, because she has followed these kinds of requests from others in the past, to.
Did they give you an engineering report or no?
They did not. They sent the letter that they intended to do this. This was, it starts out by saying that this is just a courtesy. So that's why I think it would be well for you to have that phone call made and they asked to be contacted by December 15th, so it's.
Let me take a copy.
Yeah, I think we carpent you, but you.
Yeah, let me just make sure.
Sure, sure, no problem. Okay, and that's all I have in correspondence. Does anyone else have anything?
No.
Okay, let it be noted, it is not even 10 of 9 and we are ready to go into attorney-client for the sake of talking about contracts largely. That's our reason for breaking before a journey tonight. Is there any further discussion or shall we do that? Is there motion?
The weather first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much. Good night.